We're not going to get up and start. We're going to go to the first part. Do I need to do roll call?
Gavel.
Oh, gavel. Thank you for everybody coming, and I might be a little off because I'm running late, but I believe we're going to start with the Urban Renewal District Budget Committee regular session. Is that correct, Robert?
Yes.
With that, welcome to the Urban Renewal District Budget Committee regular session. Can we have a call to order? Or, all right, call to order. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a roll call, please? When you're ready, please. You say your record.
Josh Bachman.
Here.
Matt Barber.
Here.
Steve Clemmons.
Here.
Karine Dudo.
Here.
David Glab.
Here.
Ricky Joe Hickey.
Here.
Megan Keating.
Here.
Molly King.
Here.
Gary Lillard.
Here.
Mary Ann is absent excuse. Roxy Ogilvy is absent excuse. Justin Rock.
Here.
Tony Smith is absent excuse. Denise Wheeler, here.
Thank you. All right, this meeting of the LeGrand Urban Renewal District Budget Committee is for the sole purpose of approving the minutes of May 12, 2025, Urban Renewal District Budget Hearing. With that, is there any changes to the consent agenda, or do we have approval?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed?
Nope.
Perfect. At this time, I am going to adjourn to the City LeGrand Budget Committee regular session. Do I need to gavel each meeting? Go come do this, Steve. All right, I would like to call this meeting to order. We are going into the City of LeGrand Budget Committee regular session. Do we have a roll call, please?
Josh Bachman.
Here.
Matt Barber.
Here.
Steve Clemmons.
Here.
Karine Dudo.
Here.
David Glab.
Here.
Ricky Joe Hickey.
Here.
Megan Keating.
Here.
Molly King.
Here.
Gary Lillard.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner is absent excuse. Roxy Ogilvy is absent excuse. Justin Rock.
Here.
Tony Smith is absent excuse. Denise Wheeler.
Here.
Thank you. This meeting of the City LeGrand Budget Committee is for sole purpose of approving the minutes from May 12 and 13, 2025, City's General Enterprise and Other Funds Budget Hearing. Do we have any changes that need to be happening to the minutes, or do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Does anybody oppose? No, perfect. All right, at this time, we are going to adjourn to the Urban Renewal Agency regular session. I would like to call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Justin Rock.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner is absent excuse. Karine Dudo.
Here.
David Glab.
Here.
Ricky Joe Hickey.
Here.
Molly King.
Here.
Denise Wheeler.
Here.
Agenda approval. Is there any changes to the agenda this evening?
There's no changes.
Thank you. Consent agenda, does anybody see anything that they see an issue? If not, can we have a motion, please?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Does anybody oppose?
Nope.
Perfect. All right, this section will be for public comments, and this is for public comments for the Urban Renewal Agency. So if there is not anything on the agenda this evening that you would like to come up to the podium and speak for the Urban Renewal, not the City Council, now would be that time. I don't see anybody running, so we will move on to the next portion of our meeting. All right, the public hearing is now open on the fiscal year 2025-2026 Urban Renewal District Budget, as approved by the Urban Renewal District Budget Committee on May 12, 2025. Is there any of the agency members' declarations or conflicts of interest for the Urban Renewal? Don't see any. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the agency. In your packet, you have the Urban Renewal Agency's approved budget by the Budget Committee. You can make revisions to this budget. There are limitations if you want to increase appropriations, but I don't anticipate that will happen. And just to kind of summarize the key pieces of the budget, the programs in place for Urban Renewal are essentially the same as they have been for the past several years. We have $350,000 allocated of new money for Call for Projects, which is a public-private partnership, up to $75,000 per project. We have $500,000 of agency-identified project dollars for capital savings. We do not have a specific project envisioned for that, but those dollars are available. And there is also $425,000 for Business Park, Traded Sector investments. It's similar to the Call for Projects program. There's not a funding cycle for that, and there's some different requirements in terms of traded sector and job creation to access those funds, and continuing with $75,000 of the SOD program funding. This fund also pays the debt service on the urban renewal improvements such as LeGrand Business and Technology Park and the Two Streets Gate projects in downtown LeGrand. It is also the primary source of funding for our economic development efforts, and it includes an increase in funding for LeGrand Main Street downtown, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about the approved budget.
Any questions for Robert? At this time, we would like to invite public house community in connection with the fiscal year 2025-2026 Urban Renewal District Budget. Is there any citizen that would like to speak about our budget for Urban Renewal? With that, we do have a three-minute time limit. Yes, please step to the podium, fill out the paper.
My name is Chris Hafer. I'm a business manager, have been for many years in this valley. I guess my biggest question is, we're having all kinds of trouble hiring people that there's no drug or criminal background on them. It's killing business. It's got to be killing new business. Why aren't we taking funds to try to drag in people into business parks that are still relatively empty over so many years, and using that to improve, maybe stick another drug enforcement officer where they need to be?
So this part's for the Urban Renewal, not for the City Council.
This is a business deal. As a business manager for several manufacturers in this valley, why aren't, he just said you had money for businesses, how about a partnership with the businesses that'll actually Does that make sense?
We are. We've actually invested all the money that comes from Urban Renewal back into businesses. That is what the money is for, is Urban Renewal. Have you?
Bredo Manufacturing is looking for four people right now. Can't find one that'll pass a drug test.
Bredo isn't in the city limits of LeGrand either.
Well, Royal Rock is looking for somebody in the City of LeGrand. We actually have a building that we would like to put into a business park and start up our Bagged Rock operation again. I can't find people that can pass a drug test to get in there.
We all, we're not just council members, and
I get that.
We're business people as well, and we understand that, and we feel that just as much as you do.
Okay. I'm just saying, there should be a correlation there. There is a correlation there.
There is, of course.
So the major problem that we're having as business owners over here, and as people trying to get people to come to work, seems to be related to the downfall of this valley in the increased drugs, the increased homeless, the increased, I mean, there's all kinds of issues there, but it all seems to be centered around that drug issue.
If I'm not mistaken, as it pertains to this particular meeting and the budget for the Urban Renewal District, that would be an inappropriate use of funding from the Urban Renewal. That wouldn't apply. That's very specified, limited funding, and so your request is not one that could be granted.
It was more of a, more of a suggestion.
Right.
I appreciate it.
But money, money can help.
Yep. Thank you.
Hi, so I'm a partial business owner, 50% of G. Gordon Construction Company, and we actually have a lot out at the business park as part of that urban renewal development. So I understand why you guys have a certain allotment of money to be able to help with that. We ourselves are going to be applying for some funding so we can get a building out there, and so we definitely appreciate that. As the previous gentleman said, we run into the same problems. I mean, we just fired two people this week. We're going to be looking for more people. Drugs are a problem. I know that's a completely separate issue, but I just wanted to come up here and kind of say, we do appreciate the extra funding to be able to bring and expand our business because if that property wasn't available and some of the funds to be able to put into the brand-new building, it's very expensive to expand and go from scratch, you know, all the utilities, brand-new building, prices are rising. But I just wanted to put that out there, that we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can you please state your name for the record, too, please?
Tammy Gordon.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, when you go up there for public record or for public comment, just please state your name. That's what we need for the record before you start speaking. Thank you.
All right, is there any other citizens that would like to speak on the Urban Renewal Budget? Don't see any. At this time, I will close the public hearing on the fiscal year 2025-2026 Urban Renewal District Budget and invite agency discussion.
This is number six here. I move that the proposed resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025-2026 Urban Renewal District Budget be read by title only, put to a vote and passed as presented.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more additional agency discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, she needs to read the resolution.
Yes, we probably should. Thank you.
Thank you.
City recorder to read the proposed resolution by title only.
A resolution of the City of LeGrand Urban Renewal Agency of the City of LeGrand, Union County, Oregon, adopting the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, making appropriations and levying taxes.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Does anybody oppose? No. Unfinished business, there's none, no new business. District manager comments?
Yeah, just one. We're just at the conclusion of the Call for Projects window. We're currently in the process of working on staff reports for four applications that have been submitted. That's all I have regarding Urban Renewal.
Perfect. Thank you. Any agency members comment? At this time, we will adjourn to the City Council regular session. All right, I would like to call the meeting to order. We have a roll call, roll call, please.
Justin Rock.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner is absent excuse. Karine Dudo.
Here.
David Glab.
Here.
Ricky Joe Hickey.
Here.
Molly King.
Here.
Denise Wheeler.
Here.
Perfect, thank you. Is there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
Thank you. Consent agenda, is there any, anything on the consent agenda that needs to be addressed or looked at a little more? If not, can we have a motion?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Perfect. All right, now we will move on to the City of LeGrand's. This is going to be the public comments for the City of LeGrand. Please step to the podium. You do have three minutes, and state your name as the city recorder requested. Thank you.
Mayor, this would not be the appropriate time for the budget-related public comments.
Oh.
Just non-agenda.
Are we in regular session, City Council?
You're in the regular session, public comments for non-agenda items.
Yes, please, non-agenda item. Thank you.
Sheriff Cody Bowen, 204 Scorpio Drive here in LeGrand. I just want to address, I obviously stirred up some stuff over the last couple weeks. Wrote a letter. Obviously, some of you read it. I've heard from some of you. I just want to clarify that my intent with that letter was to bring awareness to what was going on behind the scenes. It was not an attack on the City of LeGrand and the Police Department. It was not an attack on the council or the mayor. I have a great relationship with the City of LeGrand. Our boots-on-the-ground guys work very well together as far as Union County goes as a whole. Our law enforcement is outstanding. They do a fantastic job with the resources that they have and the staffing that they have. My relationship with the mayor on a personal level, I've known him since we were two years old, and he's a best friend of mine, and I would never do anything to discredit what he does in this city because I think he's an outstanding mayor. I give credit to all of you guys that serve on this council because I know being in the public eye, it sucks most of the time. That was not the intent of my letter. The intent of my letter was to call out some stuff that had happened in the past. Couple years ago, I was here in regards to a needs assessment that was needed to be, I was trying to get partnership with, a needs assessment for the law enforcement facility, partnering with the City of LeGrand and the county. I was all but laughed at by the city administrator saying that the city wasn't ready for that, and I was foolish to think that we could do this. I came to you with a proposal. Some of you were here. Some of you remember, I was very animated at the time. I was emotional at the time because we had an opportunity to do a needs assessment for both the county and for the city for $37,000. And I waited around for a couple months for that to happen. It didn't happen. I went ahead and did it myself, paid $50,000 for myself to do it, and I came to you and I said, how are you going to explain to the citizens when you have to spend $50,000 instead of a mere $18,000 at the time? Because the city administrator said we weren't ready for that. A few months later, you guys went ahead and did it. You went ahead and did it with the same person that I sent the RFP out to, the same company that already came and did it, and you spent $50,000 instead of $18,000 because of stuff that wasn't brought to your attention. My intent behind that letter was that there is a puppet master that runs this city, and you guys only get to see what he wants to show you. Chief Bell put in his budget a request for a drug task force, for another position, to help me, to help the city, to help LeGrand, because he knows that there is a need for it. That was in his budget. It was removed from his budget before it ever got to you guys. That's what I was trying to bring out, is the baloney that takes place behind the scenes is what I was frustrated with. Not a shot at you guys, not a shot at the City of LeGrand, not a shot at the officers, and strictly to bring attention to the frustrations that I have been dealing with over the last couple years to try and get some help. And most of you know me, and when I have a mouthful of something, I'm going to say it, and it's cost me some very good relationships and some friendships, and it's pissed a lot of people off. But I can't sit back when I feel like there's something going on, and the citizens of LeGrand don't know what's going on, let alone when the council doesn't know what's going on. So I just wanted to clarify that. That was my intention behind that. I'm sorry if I brought any, whatever, I know you got a lot of phone calls. I know the city came out with a follow-up that had some great stats, some great topics in there, but it addressed absolutely nothing about what I was talking about. I wasn't trying to take anything away from the city officers. They're outstanding, they do a great job. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Cody? I think, I think this is a good opportunity to improve our communication, and I think that was some of the problem, is a breakdown of communication, of not getting all the information that we need when we need it to make informed decisions and proper decisions. So I hope we can improve the communication, and I know Matt comes to just about every meeting he can, except for when he's working Salem, so I hope that we can work on that and do a little better.
Yeah, and I can work on that on my end as well. I want you to know that I came to every meeting that I was told to come to. Chief and I shared some information. Administrator was out of town for several weeks, so it took a long time for me to get the invite to come to the meeting and say, this is the time to talk about it. I would have been here sooner, but it just didn't work out.
My perspective is you're always welcome to coming, and new comments.
Appreciate that.
I think that would be beneficial, is to have them more regularly, and we can kind of work on these issues piece by piece.
I agree. I'll work harder at that.
We can do both ways, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was a little bit, a little frustrated with the methods that you used, you know? To me, it struck, struck me as more than a little disingenuous. You were openly invited to, you know, we explained that the proper process of making a change in the budget would be to show up at the Budget Committee hearing. I went back, because I'm like, my recollection is you were invited, I reviewed the minutes, you were invited twice, well, you were standing right here, and so to say that you weren't is, it's just...
I didn't say that I wasn't invited.
Yeah.
I can't, except for one meeting.
Right.
I was invited to two. I sent a sergeant with the data that you requested.
And the data, the data showed up, it was 10-year-old data, not actionable data. And we asked, we said, why are we getting 10-year-old data? We can't work off of 10-year-old data. We need to know what's happening now. And the response we got was, well, we didn't, you know, something along, it was too hard, we didn't have time. To me, it says little effort was put in to provide this council with information that could have led to a granting of that request. It also seems, you know, it just, it brought a lot of flak down on us. We care deeply about the drug issue in our community. Nobody is shoving that under the rug. Nobody's turning a blind eye to it. Every person on this Every person on this dais had had discussion after discussion after discussion about the drugs that affect so much of the quality of life in this community. And so, you know, again, I was, I was thoroughly disappointed at the way that you chose to communicate your frustration because
Sure.
a lot of us who are right there caring with you about this felt thrown under the bus. And, and, and it, again, to me, totally disingenuous. We, I, I sat, you can review the, you know, budget hearing. I sat and said, hey, I think we were expecting somebody from the sheriff's department. We openly talked about it at that hearing, how can we possibly fund this? We would like to help, but, you know, that kind of communication breaks down, that help. And so I share Karine's thoughts. I hope that this is an opportunity to improve. I frankly would, I, you know, I'd love an apology to this council because some things were said that just simply were not true. And it, and it has led the public who doesn't regularly listen to these meetings and doesn't always come in to, to think things about us that are simply not true, couldn't be further from the truth, about our opinions and feelings about, you know, how we handle drug issues in this community. And so, you know, please avoid this kind of stuff in the future. It's not helpful. In fact, it's destructive to what we're trying to accomplish and, and, you know, we, we don't just balance a budget for law enforcement, we deal with a budget that is parks and pools and streets and everything else that our community has. We're running a deficit. Everybody knows that. This is, you know, we all want to do lots and lots of things, but when we're balancing that, you have to work on priorities. And we're trying to do our best, nobody here doesn't care about the drug issue, we all see the downstream ramifications of what happens. I hope that in the future, we can work together, communicate together and be honest about what's going on. I mean, citizens in this community care about things, but they don't always see all sides of it. They don't see necessarily the fact that to fund a drug task force officer at the cost of $125,000 means that we have to pull that $125,000 from something else. And it's going to come from streets or it's going to come from parks or maybe the library or all of these other programs that people are just as passionate about and care just as deeply about. These are difficult decisions and I'm not shirking those difficult decisions, we signed up for them when we, when we sit up here. But not always are people aware of that when they just get a sound bite off of a public news release that affects only one angle of a multifaceted issue that we're dealing with. So anyway, I appreciate you coming to the meeting for one, but, but like Karine said, you know, let's communicate better.
Sure. Can I respond to that? Is that okay? First off, I, I won't apologize for it, I apologize for the outcry that came to you absolutely as a result of that. I won't apologize for what I said, I stand behind that 110%. Was my approach not the best? Absolutely. It was at a point of frustration. I sat right here when Chief Bell said that it was a benefit to this community, we needed this position. He stood right here and said, you can't find it on the minutes anymore, somehow it's been deleted, it's for the public, to just hear everything that he had to say. He put it in his budget, it was a priority to him, it was chopped from his budget. I understand priorities, I work with the budget, I work with the county, their budgeting as well. I think a nation as a whole has put law enforcement as a lesser of a priority than it should be. And without law enforcement in the City of LaGrande, without the support from everybody and the true understanding of what goes on with it, our parks and our roads and our, everything else means absolutely jack shit. We have to, excuse my language, we have to have law enforcement to take care of the evil things that take, that happen in this community first and foremost. And I, I'm not saying that you don't support law enforcement, that's not what I'm trying to say, but I think when a drug task force, when we give you data from 10 years ago, when we actually had contributing members, when we had four or five people in the drug task force and we could show you actual data of what it was working, yes, it's old, but things haven't changed, if anything, they've gotten worse. I understand where you're coming from, I'll work harder on the communication, but I, I will not apologize for what I said.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you stated that it was in the budget, but by the time we got it, it was out of the budget?
When we left that night after Chief Bell spoke, he said that he had put it in his budget, put the request in his budget.
Okay.
And it was removed before it got to you.
So can I ask the hypothetical, who removed it or what?
I can only assume city administrator, I don't know. I don't want to speak out of place, I don't want to bring anything on him, I don't know. All I know is it was in his budget and then I believe you were the one that were saying you were, this is the first time you've heard of it. So that, that concerned me, that somewhere there was a disconnect in communication from his budget coming in to getting to you or the budget committee.
Just curious.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening, I'm Matthew Miles, 101 Spring Avenue, LaGrande. I'm a citizen and business owner. I want to start first by acknowledging and thanking you for your service, you all volunteer and I appreciate that. Thank you to our law enforcement, the hard work that they have to do. None of this is easy and I understand budgets, I'm on the county budget committee and we have some of the same challenges that everyone else does when it comes to figuring out where their priorities are, I get it. So my message is to you on the city council, I want to, and I'm not here to point fingers, I'm not here, I don't know, I'm speaking in regard to the drug task force. Appreciate Cody's comments and I appreciate your questions and comments as well. I would, I'm here to help communicate with you and maybe, maybe all of us could have done a better job of communicating sooner, sharing some of our frustrations, perhaps that would have helped, I don't know. Again, I'm not here to point fingers. But I would, do want to remind you that, that we elected you to represent us here in the city. We didn't elect the city manager. City manager works for you, not the other way around. I don't know the details, I've heard some tonight from, from Cody, Sheriff Bowen. But I'll, I'll suggest this, perhaps some of the backlash that, that you've heard, the comments you've heard tonight and probably over the last several weeks regarding the letter from Sheriff Bowen, perhaps that's an example of the straw that broke the camel's back. People are frustrated, I'm frustrated. As a business owner, as a citizen, I've kind of had it up to about there. We've watched our town deteriorate, there's many, there's many positives about LaGrande, I love living here. Don't, I'm not here to bash LaGrande or you as a city council for doing the best job that you can, given the resources you have, that's not, that's not why I'm here. But there are certain things that have deteriorated, we've all seen it. I'm not here to give a laundry list of examples, but we know it. And I think, in my opinion, the obvious, the obvious cause of a lot of this are drugs and drug-related crime.
You can wrap it up, Mr. Miles, you do have a three-minute time limit?
Thank you. Appreciate the LaGrande City Police Force for making their, putting out information regarding the arrests. But I'm asking you, as you, as you look for a new city manager, to consider your reviewing roles and responsibilities and reconsider at some point the drug task force, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carson Cupid and this is Jasmine McKeller. We are a part of FCC LA, which is Family, Career, Community Leaders of America. And we did a star event for public policy advocate for public restrooms in LaGrande at our state conference in Lebanon, Oregon. We did this project because Jasmine has cerebral palsy and has faced many barriers being confined to a power wheelchair, especially in the realm of public restrooms at our local parks and recreational areas. For instance, Riverside Pioneer and Pioneer Bernie and the Odyssey Center, due to the non-compliance of ADA standards at these locations. It is a struggle for her as well as many others within our community who are confined to a wheelchair or have mobility issues to utilize the restrooms at these particular locations. Now, we have been working with the LaGrande High School and Parks and Rec on this project. We are here to present to the city to inform about our project and ask if there's any way for the city to support this change in our community so there is access for all. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. It's not easy, is it?
Did you take these measurements?
You did a good job.
You did a very good job.
Yeah, you did really well.
Very thorough.
You did good.
This is excellent.
Thank you. Good job, Jasmine.
It's a hard act to follow. My name is Candace Smith, 301 B Avenue here in LaGrande. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. I'm a board member of Art Center East and I'm really proud to be here today.
This is actually a budget committee one, so this is not the right spot for that.
Oh, great, well, I'll see you in a little bit.
I knew what she was going to talk about.
Thank you, Robert. All people, I think you would know how to fill that out the best, Steve.
It was the issue I was struggling with. I hadn't come here tonight really to speak publicly, but I'd like to give sort of a civic lesson and also some support. We have a city manager, we have a manager, a council manager form of government. Your role as counselors is to set policy and direction. The manager's role is to administrate the city. There's a lot of stuff that goes on, and it's not baloney, that goes on by the city manager and the department directors that we, we never have privy to. It's, that's the way it is. If you wanted to, you'd be occupied up to your eyes and beyond. You'd be so far below water trying to keep up with what our city manager does and what our department directors do, it's impossible. The insinuation that our city administrator is doing things that are not healthy for our community is absolutely bogus. That man has an immense amount of integrity, has immense amount of knowledge, you kudo him every year on his ability to manage the finances of our city. You need to remember that, the citizens of LaGrande need to remember that. I back that man 120% because I know the relationship that I had with him as the mayor was beyond distrust. I, if I needed anything from Robert, it came to me instantly and you all know that because when you ask him, you get it. The insinuations, again, that something nefarious is going on in the city manager's office should not be taken without some investigation of your own. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Would anybody else like to speak about non-agenda items this evening? All right, we'll move on. Looks like we are going to move into public hearing. Like the first one is consider resolution, annexation, property at 315 South 20th Street, file number 01A N P dash 25. Could we have the staff report, Mike?
Yeah, thank you, did I miss it or did you just shuffle up my items tonight?
Did I?
There's a lot of items.
I can jump ahead, that's a new business, but I can jump ahead and do that one.
Oh wait, no, let's go back then.
Okay. Goal 14.
Yep, yep, so it'd be item 5A, if you're ready.
5A.
That'll be pretty quick, too.
Oh, it's the big package, that's why I moved over because it was so big, I didn't want to go through it, probably, no, just joking, sorry. All right, so this is a public hearing and the second reading by title only for proposed ordinance amending the goal 14 chapter of the Grand Comprehensive Plan. All right. The public hearing is still open for the ordinance to be read a second time by title only and considered for adoption and that the rules of order for the public hearing were read in its entirety during the regular session of May 7, 2025. Can we have the staff report now?
Yeah, good, thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so this is your second reading, you've heard the staff report last month, this is the follow-up or second phase to an economic development effort. The first phase was an economic opportunities analysis that was done probably about three or four years ago now. And that resulted in the city having a need for an additional 60-plus acres of commercial and a hundred-ish, 120-ish plus acres of industrial. The second phase, which were required under state law to do is, how are you, how are you going to satisfy that? And so we went through a process and received grant funding from the state to go through an urban growth boundary expansion analysis, which is the goal 14 report that is before you. And we've identified a number of areas that are candidates for expansion, but unfortunately we don't have any willing property owners that are interested in coming in at this time. And so the report that you're being asked to adopt simply adopts the justification so that when the opportunity arises in the future and an industry chooses to locate in LaGrande and finds one of these properties, that we've already done all of the homework and all of the legwork to expedite an urban growth boundary expansion, bring them in so we can provide them city services and allow them to develop there. So, so tonight, you're just being asked to adopt a report and subsequent to tonight, if, if, if that occurs, then I'll be moving this forward to the county for co-adoption because that is the next part of the requirement as the county would need to support, you know, that amendment as, as they delegate all authority to land use and our urban growth boundary to the city. And so we manage that, so we have kind of a co-adoption process for these efforts. But do you have any questions?
Mike, can you remind me, did you say the time window is shortening between how often we have to do these reports?
Well, the time window is shortening on residential.
Okay.
So the residential, because we forecast out 20 years because that's, that's your target. It used to be that about every 10 years enough things have changed in your community that you then start looking at reevaluating. The state has mandated, at least on the residential side, every eight years you're due for going through this analysis. And it's the needs analysis you do every eight years and if you find that you have a need, then that forces you into this phase we're doing right now on the economic side. When we did the residential one a number of years ago, we didn't have a need, so we didn't have to go through this second phase. But knowing that conditions change and they have been changing rapidly the last several years, it's a good thing to do every, you know, probably five to eight years-ish or so.
Any more questions from? Go ahead.
Very thorough. No.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, we would like to invite public testimony for this matter. Do you may in favor, neutral, opposition? Nope, perfect. Council discussion, is there any more discussion on this matter?
Just a lot of work has gone into this and it's very useful and thorough and I appreciate it and it just gets us... it and it just gets us ready to go when a request is made.
All right. There is no more discussion, I'd like to close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I move that the proposed ordinance amending the goal 14 chapter of the La Grande Comprehensive Plan be read for a second time by title only, put to a vote and adopted.
Second.
Is there any more additional council discussion? With no more, could the city recorder read the proposed ordinance for the second time by title only?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, amending the city of La Grande Comprehensive Plan, ordinance 3269, series 2024, to adopt the 2025 goal 14 urban growth boundary expansion analysis and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Does anybody oppose? Nope, perfect. All right. We are considering resolutions adopting fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. The public hearing is now open on the fiscal year 2025-2026 city of La Grande budget and state revenue sharing as approved by the city of La Grande Budget Committee on May 13, 2025. Is there any declarations or conflicts of interest?
I would like to declare a potential conflict of interest related to our request for city funding for Art Center East. I am the youth learning coordinator there and a paid staff member, and I will not directly receive any financial benefit if the funding request is approved. I believe I can remain impartial, but I will not participate in the discussion related to the request itself, but I will participate in all other discussions and will vote on the adoption of the budget.
On this one, Robert, do I need to withdraw myself for?
I would go ahead and state the potential. Potential?
Basically, I do have a potential conflict of interest because I do own a towing company that has a bid, but it is not paid by the city, it's paid by the people that we tow. So I think that I will be very, I don't have my paper, so I'm trying to shoot off the tip, sorry. But I will be very true and do everything that I think is best for the city. I am not getting paid by the city for what I do, so I think that I can vote and be good to go. Anything else?
Actually, this resolution adopts all of the budget, so I would refrain, I would declare the actual for the public, or the potential for the public works and then to refrain from discussion of the public works. It'd probably be good to abstain from the budget because it adopts all of, including public works.
Okay. So do you want David to finish this part for me?
No, I think you can still do it, because you're just not gonna participate in.
Not gonna participate or vote?
Yeah.
Okay, very well. All right, and with that, could we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So for those that did not attend the budget committee hearings, I think it's helpful to talk about how we got here with the adopted budget. Each January, the city council meets in a work session format for an annual retreat. And during that retreat, there are a number of issues that the council discusses and priorities that they set that ultimately feed into what we do with the budget. As an example, one of the questions that is asked of the city council is, do we want to continue with the approach of maintaining current staffing levels, programs and functions in limited increased staffing based on projected fiscal resources? And that was a question that is asked of the council every year, and this year they answered that in the affirmative that they wanted to do that. As was alluded to during public comments, the city's general fund budget, when you include capital purchases, is projecting a $5.8 million deficit. Now, that's a big number, but keep in mind about 2 million of that is ARPA funds that are already in the bank. But if you take that down to a, what is the operating budget of the city's general fund that is running in the red? The answer is $1.2 million. Now, why would we adopt the budget with a $5.8 million deficit? It's because we have $11 million in the bank. And we can cover that in not reduced services. And one of the things that we have historically done is taking a very careful look at any requests for additional staffing and funding, or continuing money funding. And I'll give you the last three that were approved by the council. We approved two additional 911 dispatchers to deal with the substantially increased call volume that we are seeing. That was two years ago that that topic came up. And a lot was made about me taking something out of the police chief's budget. And normally, I would not respond, but frankly, I'm a little pissed. In the council retreat topic submission, two years ago, Chief Bell did identify as a potential need, the drug investigations position and two communications position. I knew we could not afford to do both. Those are continuing money. So in advance of the retreat, the chief and I talked about what's your priority for the coming year? And he unhesitatingly said communications. That's what was, he requested in his budget. That was what was proposed to the city council. That was approved by the budget committee and adopted. We have yet to fill those two positions, by the way. This year, in the council retreat topics, Chief Bell identified that we do still have continuing challenges with staffing and the number of staffing that were allocated, which the council is fully aware of. The chief identified in that retreat document to me that it would be nice to be able to add a couple positions to add to patrol shifts. There was no reference to drug investigations in that request. And in looking at the fact that we're facing a significant deficit, that we are about to enter into year three of collecting bargaining agreements, we have had pretty substantial spikes in inflation over the last couple years, I'm pretty certain that our labor costs for '26 and beyond are going to go up. And adding any continuing money positions on the eve of labor negotiations, when I'm looking at a $1.2 million continuing money shortfall in the general fund would be irresponsible. And so, no Sheriff Bowen, he did not request it in his budget. It was because anything that is requested in a department's budget is then reviewed by me, and if it's adjusted, it's adjusted in the proposed budget. So I think you may have a communication breakdown. Back to the budget that is before you, it does maintain staffing levels. The only increased position is a grant-funded position in urban forestry. The budget committee, there was quite a bit of conversation about, should we balance the budget? And I think one of the comments that was raised was, if we're going to look at reducing programs and services, that really needs to be done starting from the retreat and to be very clear so that the messaging coming into the budget hearing is, we are looking at making these reductions. So the public has an opportunity to respond to that. And even in advance of that, the directors and the council can talk about the prioritization of if we have to cut, where should those cuts be? And ultimately, what the budget committee did was they reduced a transfer of unanticipated increase in general fund cash from the city's general fund to the general reserve to reduce that deficit slightly, which is precisely what we did last year as well. So the budget that we have for consideration in the general fund, I think, is supportable and defensible. It allows us to continue to provide the services that we currently are. Does it allow us to do everything that we would like to do or, quite frankly, need to do? It does not, but we do not have unlimited resources. The public works and enterprise funds, as a reminder, those are all self-sustaining funds that are operating like a business. We cannot take revenues from water to buy police cars. So the water fund is self-sustaining, stormwater, sewer, building inspections. One thing that we do do as an acknowledgement of the condition of our streets, the council a number of years ago passed a resolution allocating what to do with what we call the unanticipated increase in beginning fund cash. So when we put together the budget, we think our beginning cash is going to be X dollars. It's never gonna be exactly X dollars. And if it's more than we expected, we take a look at those added dollars to see if they're restricted dollars that are tied to something else. And if they're not, we view those as dollars that are available for one-time expenditures. And by council policy, we take 50% of those and move them to the city's general reserve fund for future purchases. That's where that reduction was made in the transfer. 25% of them are budgeted for current year capital and equipment needs, and 25% of those are transferred to streets to work on our streets, which we all know could use many more dollars than that. And so in the adopted budget, there's about $460,000 that is going from the city's general funds to the streets that would not otherwise go there. And so that's the 10,000-foot overview of the budgets, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions for us? All right. We would like to invite public testimony on the 2025-2026 city of La Grande budget and state revenue sharing. If you do have any, please step forward, you have a three-minute time limit.
With not further ado, my name is Candace Smith, 301 B Avenue in La Grande, Oregon, and I'm a board member on Art Center East. We have some other board members here and other people representing Art Center East in the room. I've proudly called La Grande home for about 30 years, but this is the first time I've ever been in front of you, so I respectfully am really honored to be here. We have a shared sense of care for our community. And we've all seen La Grande show up for our schools, our neighbors, our local organizations, and we take care of one another. Tonight, I'm asking you to do just that once again. Art Center East is asking for renewed support from our city and from you, our leaders, to help fund essential ADA renovations to the historic Carnegie Library. This is a city-owned building and one ACE has faithfully cared for over the past decade. If you've lived here long enough, you likely have memories, or your children do, of walking through those doors as it once was our public library. It's more than a building, it's a part of our shared history, and it should be accessible to everyone. Since the merger in 2015, ACE has transformed the Carnegie into a vibrant cultural hub, serving over 11,000 people last year alone, offering free and low-cost programming to youth, families, artists and seniors across eastern Oregon. But not everyone can fully participate. The second floor is not ADA accessible. That excludes people with disabilities, mobility aids, or even parents with strollers from gallery exhibits, performances and gatherings. Imagine this, a young student with mobility challenges has their great art project they've made and they can't get up the stairs to go and show it, because they can't reach it safely. A veteran managing chronic pain wants to attend a workshop but is stopped by stairs, not by lack of interest. These are not rare situations. Most of us know someone with a disability or will experience one ourselves. Disability is a reality, not an exception. So in 2019, you already approved $50,000 to match this project and support this project. And since then, ACE has secured $100,000 grant from the Oregon Community Foundation. We worked with local architects and engineers and have secured a contracted firm. ACE has also navigated pandemic like we all did with delays and rising costs of construction. The costs are now totaling about $446,000. Why we need your help right now? Renewing or increasing your support, renewing or increasing your support, just throwing that out there, help unlock additional funding for us, keep this long overdue project moving forward and reinforce our identity that La Grande is truly an economic, educational, recreational and cultural hub for all of its residents and all of our families, because in this small town, we take care of one another. This is our building and ACE has been a responsible visionary steward and partner. Let's finish what we started, let's make sure everyone in our community can participate fully in the creative, cultural and connected life of La Grande. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert, I have a question. Does the city own that building?
Yes.
And we're renting?
We lease it for, I believe, $10 a year. And the occupant is responsible for the ongoing maintenance. It is a provision, if there are major renovations, the council has to approve those, but essentially they're responsible for the building. And as was stated, there was a dollar amount set aside as potential for grant, but that didn't come to fruition. I think we had it in the budget for a couple years and it just went by the wayside.
And it was not in this year's budget?
It was not. The request came in after the budget approval. And so that's why they were encouraged to come this evening to request.
I have a question. More for you. Was the Landmark Commission consulted about the project that they want to undertake in the building?
When they get to the point that they would have to do improvements, they would have to do certain steps, and I'll let Mike answer that in a little more detail.
So I'll give you a couple pieces of information. So the letter that I reviewed, that I think was forwarded to you for this request, includes our Landmarks Commission chair as the architectural designer that provided some guidance. So, and it is a historic building, but it is not listed. And so there's a number of things that are in place. At the moment, it is outside of our historic district, it is not a nationally recognized historic building, even though it is a nationally recognized historic building. There's a handful, there's a lot of Carnegie libraries across America and even in other countries, and we have one of the few that are not listed on the national register. And the fact that it's not listed means it's not protected and it doesn't have any of the historic strings attached to preserving and protecting its architecture and character.
Why isn't it listed? Just, yeah.
Because nobody's gone through the process. But with that said, the council approved a grant request that I successfully received, and we are, next week, the Landmarks Commission is going to be considering consultants and selecting one that they will recommend to you in July. You will be essentially picking a consultant, the successful bidder, that will do the research and carry a request forward through the historic preservation process to get this building listed on the national register. So, once it becomes listed on the national register, then the Landmarks Commission will have some level of jurisdiction to review a project to make sure that it is historically appropriate and doesn't destroy the historic integrity of a building. And they'll only be looking at the elements that are identified as historic that become listed in the register. But to complicate things a little bit more, is I think this is a great request that in a phenomenal fundraising effort that Arts East has done. And that is money that, once this building gets listed on the national register, would leverage other grant dollars that are only available to national register listed buildings or buildings that have other historic recognition, which, you know, we'll have to. recognition, which, you know, we'll have to wait until this process is completed before that's available. But that is another benefit that is coming down the road. But, go ahead.
You can tell I have some... Okay. I've been through this kind of process before, and it... Did they make it more difficult? Because it was very easy to get funding and grants for, for instance, the Elgin Opera House. It was easy for us to get that done. So, why does this seem far more difficult to get the grants and the funding for it?
I can't speak to the Elgin Opera House, but I can speak to the Liberty Theater. It's a historic building in our downtown historic district, so it is nationally... It is on the National Register for the sake of being in our district. And I don't know if it's individually listed, but it is listed collectively with our downtown. And so, it is... So, our Liberty Theater has received a ton of grant money for historic preservation because they are a listed building or a listed building in our district. And the Carnegie Library will, you know, have the opportunity for those once we get it listed. So, that's... I don't know what the Elgin Opera House had. I can't really speak to that, but I would hope that it's a building that's listed or recognized in some fashion like that.
It is, yeah. We got it done.
Thank you for coming up and asking a question. Any more questions relating to that?
Maybe a quick one, Mike. So, we talked about the current state of the budget, which is obviously concerning, and, you know, this is... It's not a small ask. It's $50,000. One of my first questions is always, is there a possibility of grants to cover that? And you've made it sound like if we can get this thing listed, that that's going to open doors for maybe some grant opportunities that could fill that gap, even if it doesn't fit within our budget currently. So...
Yeah, well, and it sounds like the budget is much bigger than what they have resources for anyway. But I guess what my comment relates to, there's other opportunities for grants out there for buildings that are historic but don't rise to the level of qualifying for some of the national preservation funds. So, they could still access those and apply for those. A lot of times, the historic preservation funds that are available through the state are much less competitive, and they have a niche, and if you fill the niche, you know, it's easier to get them. And so, I can't guarantee anything, but I think the effort we're going through will help them, depending on what that time is. And the building has been on our list from an evaluation standpoint with landmarks that it has significant issues well beyond ADA accessibility. That's probably the number-one issue, but there's lots of other challenges that that building has that could use funding down the road and maintenance.
When was it built, just for curiosity? Because I don't know.
I don't know. I'm not the right one to ask that, but I will learn that very soon when we have a consultant on board to do this. But it's been a long time.
Mayor, if I could add just a tidbit?
Yes, sir.
When the council approved the funding, the motivation behind that was that those dollars would be specifically used to address the accessibility component of the building.
This was like a couple of years ago?
Yeah, several years ago. And that was... That was why I think the council felt strongly about allocating those dollars at that time.
That's how I recall it.
Google says 1914.
Oh, oh, yeah. It's so...
Is the building structurally sound to put an elevator in it? I mean, that's something that the consultant or whoever will have to determine.
I think there's been engineers and folks that have already looked at that, because it does have a shaft location, I think, where there used to be a lift. And so, so anyway, but that's beyond what I've been involved in. But I think for the little bit that I know, the building has already been evaluated, and it is definitely capable of retrofitting to do that.
What I would suggest in regards to this specific item, go ahead and continue with the public testimony, and then when we get to the council discussion, if the council wants to have a conversation about the merits of whether or not to add this to the approved budget prior to adoption, would be best had at that time.
Can I just ask one clarification? This is a request for $50,000 to match $50,000 that Art Center East already has.
Art Center East received $100,000 from Oregon Foundation. Art Center East also has done some fundraising where there's close to another $50,000 from donations within the... Within just donors that have given money towards it. So, there is money in the bank for those kinds of things. But the matching, we were originally asked, because originally, I believe, it was about $200,000 for the project, which is what is stated in your letter. But as things have progressed since 2019, costs have increased, and so that's where we're... That's where we're at.
Thank you. So, at this time, we are going to put a little pause on this until councilor discussions. So, any other citizens that would like to step to the podium and speak of the budget, now is that time.
I'm back. I'll just add here real quick. Steve Clements, I was a member of the Budget Committee. I apologize, this never occurred to me during budget hearing, but I want to... I want to get... Answer some questions first before I make the statement. Is the police force fully staffed at this point?
No.
Okay. Are those positions currently in your budget?
Yes.
So, you have unfilled positions in the police force. My understanding from Chief Bell is that it's been difficult to find people for the positions. Robert mentioned that earlier, trying to fill the 911 caller state... Caller positions. Just throwing it out there. It didn't occur to me until just this evening. But you have two police officers' positions that are unfilled. One of those could work on drugs. Thank you.
Anybody else like to step to the podium? Yeah, if you would like to chief more well and stuff.
I think... Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Just avail myself to, if I can clarify any information, but in light of what Steve just shared, the answer is yes. We're not fully staffed. We're authorized 19 sworn police officers right now. And that includes Lieutenant Hayes and myself. And right now, we're staffed at 17. I have two police officers that have applications out with other agencies, so who knows? We have the potential in some near future to be four police officers short. The city manager commented, you guys all, prior to the council retreat in preparation for budget season, we're all part of a similar conversation. The staff are... The directors are historically asked for, hey, give us your top three priorities for your department in preparation for that work session. And I think councilors are asked for five. And this year, the first point in my top three was a new police department, but I wrote in that that I understand. I've been there for all of the discussions and the limitations on the funding to do that. But it's one of those things that I don't want to just let it fall off, because I think it's important to keep that at the top of our minds, you know, as staff and councilors come and go. The second piece was two additional police officers. And a part of the way that I framed that was that, you know, we would assign those to patrol, but really what would happen with more police officers assigned to patrol is that right now, the way that I have the department organized, which is very similar to the way that it's been organized for quite some time, is we have three detectives in our investigation section, one of which is a grant-funded position that I know we've talked about before. So, what that person can do, there's some guardrails around that. That's a special victims detective. The grant... We're actually not the grant recipient. Shelter From the Storm is the grant recipient. It's federal money, Office of Violence Against Women. So, that detective has to focus on domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking. So, I can't assign that person under the guidelines of the grant funds to do something besides those things. So, right now, as you guys have seen, information I've shared with you and recently shared publicly, your police department's calls for service, the complexity of the calls for service are up. If you do a five-year look back, our calls for service are up between 10% and 11%. That equates to about 1,000 to 1,200 calls. That's not nothing. That's a lot. And when you also factor in the complexity of those calls for service related to mental health primarily, the dwell time that I spoke about before, the officers are very busy. Our officers are working their guts out, day in and day out. And if we had more police officers, then there's a greater likelihood that I could have my investigation section fully staffed. And if that were the case, then I have a detective in that place that could do some focused enforcement on drugs. But, you know, I'll leave it at that, and if you have some questions for me, happy to answer them. But I just want to make sure that you guys hear directly from me. I mean, you've seen it recently. I've talked and spoke about it before, but, you know, this entire conversation, I want to ensure that it's not lost on anyone, that your LaGrande police officers have been doing an incredible job with the resources that we have. Oregon's drug policy has had a greater impact on our community, and not just the drug policy, but also the laws surrounding how we deal with mental health issues in our communities. Those things have had a greater impact on our community, just like our neighboring communities and communities throughout the entire state of Oregon, than what we can impact through the police department. You guys have heard this. The city managers heard this. I would love to have more staff, but in the meanwhile, if I can't have that, your police officers are going to continue to do the very best they can with what we have, and it's the same way that we've done business in the 32 years that I've been there. It's not a whole lot different than the way that we operate our individual homes, and that is, we always have to prioritize, but it does not mean we're not doing drug enforcement. I've shared some facts recently, and I think that speaks on its own. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the topic.
If you want to speak, you need to step to the podium and sign, and unfortunately, we can't just have, you know, questions back and forth. Yes, exactly. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
I just had a question. We have had an increase in homeless, just like everywhere else, and I worked in Salem for about five and a half years and then commuted back here in LaGrande when I could for the military. And one of the things that I've noticed since we brought... And I don't know if I'm saying this correctly, but the warming station, is that something that the city pays for, or is that a separate organization?
It's a separate organization. The city has not funded it.
We don't fund it? Okay. Since that has come in, I personally have noticed. I've been here since 1990 here in LaGrande, and I've traveled all over the world in the military, and I see the homeless problem in Portland and Salem, and it's starting to progress on this side of the state. And some of the conversations that I have had with other personnel, other people, they've also noticed an increase. We've actually... We've got cameras at our property and our house, and it doesn't matter if they're on camera or not. They're going to commit a crime. We've had stuff stolen. We've had people pee in between our garbage cans while, you know, in the camera. So, I definitely think everybody's overworked. The budget is always short, but I really think that for our safety, we have been seeing a lot more homeless folks, mental problems, mental illness problems. Back in the day, to be politically correct, back in the day, we used to have the mental institutions to where they were helped on an individual basis. And I think in some ways, we've completely gone away from that, and now the police officers and business owners and whoever have to try to deal with that and the other agencies. So, I just want to put that out there. I didn't know who funded that, so I definitely see a huge problem, and it's getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is on budget?
It is on the budget.
For the budget.
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't know if the city paid for it, and I thought, well, that would be a way to find somebody in the budget and help with the homeless problem as well.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on the budget for this year? All right. At this time, I would like to close the public hearing of the fiscal year 2025-2026 for the City of LaGrande Budget and State Revenue Sharing by councilor discussion. Is there any councilor discussion on the budget? No discussion, motion?
I'm lost. Show me.
There. You want my book?
We're electronic, and we can't just jump back and forth. You've got to scroll and scroll, so...
I'm old school. I still got books.
Okay. I move that the proposed resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget and levying taxes be read by title only, put to a vote, and passed as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any more additional discussion? Could the city recorder read the proposed resolution by title only?
Resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, adopting the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, making appropriations and levying taxes.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? I am not voting on this matter.
I oppose.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yes, you abstained.
No, I mean...
And I opposed. She said no, and you abstained.
So, that's still four to one. All right. Now, the second one here, Robert says entertain motion.
Yeah, this is the motion to receive the state revenues in addition to the budget adoption. The city actually has to take a formal action to receive state revenue sharing.
I move that the proposed resolution electing to receive state revenues be read by title only, put to a vote, passed.
I'll second.
Could the city recorder read the proposed resolution electing to receive state revenues by item only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring the city's intent to receive state revenues.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Nope, we're good. All right. Any unfinished business? I don't see there's any new business. Would you like to go back to this one, or there, Mr. Mike? I've already read for you.
I would love to.
Consider resolution of annexing property at 315 South 20th Street, file number 01-AMP-25. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yeah, so this is property that was divided a number of years ago, and the city has a policy to require annexation, in fact, an ordinance to require annexation prior to receiving city services. This is in the urban growth boundary. The city limits is literally their property frontage, and city services are in the street. And this is a new property owner that would like to build a house and has submitted a request to Public Works to connect the city water and sewer. And so, they have proactively come to my office and asked for the city to annex them so they could receive those services. And so, this is just kind of a routine process that we've done for a number of years, and I guess I would just ask that you support their request for annexation. ask that you support their request for annexation, and so that they can receive services.
This word 20th Street kind of extends parallel-ish to Foothill?
Yeah, if you cross Gackler, and the Foothill kind of banks to the left, or turns to the left, 20th keeps going up the hill. These are the houses that have periodically, incrementally developing on the left-hand side. So this is one of the lower lots in that group of houses.
How many of those are, I'm trying to get a map in my head of...
Let's see.
So are the ones closest to Gackler and city limits? We're not going to have...
Yeah, so this is, it's kind of tough to see on this map. But so the Exhibit A that's on this map.
Oh.
Yeah, and I was going to refer to the red dashed line on here, but I don't...
So Gackler would be at the top of this map that we have as Exhibit A?
Yeah, so Exhibit A behind the ordinance, right behind the ordinance?
Yep.
So this is like...
Yes.
Yep.
All right.
So you'll see P1, P2. There's another P2. Anyway, the bottom four lots are essentially in the urban growth boundary. And as they are coming in, the next request on the agenda is another one of those. But then we'll have two left to be annexed, and then we'll have more in the city limits.
Sir, are we having a gap?
Yes.
The boundary?
Well, no, there's not a hole. There's not a hole, because the property to the east is in the urban growth boundary. So all we're doing is we're just kind of just reaching out and hitting these little bubbles and catching them. And so we do have a gap, but the gap is still contiguous to the county or urban growth boundary that's east of them. So it's not an island, if that's what your question was.
That was. Thank you.
Any more questions for staff?
Especially if the request...
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
At this time, we would like to invite public comments on this matter. Can we see any counselor discussion?
I move that the proposed resolution annexing property located at 315 South 20th Street be read by title only, put to a vote and passed.
Any more? No, you're good. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. At this time, could the city recorder read the proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annexed to the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically property at 315 South 20th Street, Township 3 South, Range 38 East, Section 16B, Tax Lot 404, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, our next one. Considering resolution annexing property at 309 South 20th Street, file number 02-AMP-25. Could we have the staff report, Mike?
Yes, so this is the exact same scenario as the last one. This is just the property right next door. So...
So just north of it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, do you have any questions?
Different property, or?
Yes.
All right. If there is no more questions for staff, could we, at this time, we'd like to invite public comment? There is none. Any more counselor discussion or a motion?
I move that the proposed resolution annexing property located at 309 South 20th Street be read by title only, put to a vote and passed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Could the city recorder read the proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annexed to the City of LaGrande, Union County, Oregon, specifically property at 309 South 20th Street, Township 3 South, Range 38 East, Section 16B, Tax Lot 701, and removing said property from the LaGrande Rural Fire Protection District.
All in favor?
Aye.
And actually, before I go into my next one, we are done with the budgets. So I don't know if anybody is waiting, or, because we're just going to keep going through these, and I don't want, I mean, you're more than welcome to leave. You can stay and listen to us. They'll go through them. That's more than here.
For Matt and Steve, just a reminder, the minutes are in the back room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
I'll just give them a quick second, and then we will move on real quick. Everybody and out if they don't want to be here.
Hi, Jasmine. Hi, Jazzy.
All right, all right, we're going to continue. Consider awarding bid for concrete repair projects. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, so the action form you have in front of you is our annual bid for our concrete contractor. This contract, basically, they bid on unit prices for commonly done projects for the city. So you'll see things like sidewalks, curbs, ramps. Those are things that, you know, maybe we'll need replacing when we do taps or street projects. And they're kind of an on-call service. So we have unit costs. That's what they'll provide those services for us through the year. And we just want to award that contract. Happy to answer any questions.
I liked how they itemized everything and where everything is. I just wish they would have put down the location of these items and where they're at.
So like the ones that we did the previous year?
Well...
So the bid is not for actual designated physical work. What we use is our quantities that were performed under the previous year's contract for quantities.
Okay.
They bid on that work, and we award based off of those numbers. But the unit prices that you see are what we're actually awarding.
Right, okay, yeah.
So this year, every time we need them to replace a panel of sidewalk, that's the price we'll pay.
Okay. All right.
Because we're trying to get through all of this in the summer.
And they're...
Well, and you know, our crews don't actually pour concrete. So we'll go in, and we'll do a sewer tap or a water tap, and there'll be a missing panel of sidewalk. These are the contractors that we can call on a basis. We hand them a list. They go out, they fix them, and we're done. And usually, most of these projects are fairly small. I mean, a panel of concrete is usually a short load on a concrete truck is less than three yards, and you're going to pay an additional fee for that. So usually, what we'll have them do is they'll accumulate like five or six or seven or 10 taps in different places. They'll get one truck, and they'll jump from all the different spots. So a lot of contractors don't really want to do this work. It's not high profit. It's just really beneficial for the community, so.
So my husband...
Here, actually, in a moment, we'll actually have public comment. And if you like, then you can go to the podium, but I appreciate it.
I'd like some comment.
No, you're fine. No, you'll have to, a moment. Any more questions for Kyle? Thank you, Kyle.
No problem.
So at this time, we'd like to invite public comments.
I love the eagerness. We need more eagerness.
The other thing is, people that are watching online can't hear you unless you're speaking the microphone, so.
I guess I better talk in my military voice, huh? Tammy Gordon again. So my husband and I are the ones that have done this for the last five years. And like he said, it is not a glamorous job, not a lot of money for each one. But the concrete prices do go up every single year. And just since we did this bid, the concrete prices are going up again, because they're having to change. We went to a meeting, not even a month ago, I think it was. They are changing what actually goes into the cement production, which means it's going to be more expensive, and it's going to be potentially less durable, just so you know.
Who's there?
Because they're going to be more green. So Ash Grove. So Arti Mack and, oh, who's the other? Hampton Rogers Asphalt, whoever does the other, I'm trying to remember, that actually create the concrete. They get it from Ash Grove. So when they mix it, they are going to be putting, and I don't want to confuse this, but like more lime products from the ocean floor, which could potentially make it where it doesn't last as long. And just to give you an example, we redid our house. We're on a corner, two lots. We redid our concrete driveways and sidewalks. It cost us about $15,000 to do back in early 90s, or excuse me, early 2000 for $15,000. And because of the quality of the concrete, and of course, my husband's expertise and the quality of work, we haven't had any problems with it, even today. You're not going to see that with the quality that's going to be coming out. And from what I understand, ODOT, I've also been attending the ODOT meetings as well. All the ODOTs, DOTs have been approving this change, because they're going green. And I don't want to put my personal opinions on this, but it doesn't make any sense to me to make a product less quality and charge more. And it goes down the line. So by the time the end user, like us, get it, they've already tacked on a couple extra prices. So if you have any questions in regards to that, the other thing I wanted to mention, too, is you mentioned about the summer. So the fiscal year of the city, and I know I've got a little time, the weather starts getting bad around December, November, sometimes October. If some miracle that the contract could actually go until the next contract is awarded, I think that would be beneficial to the city, to where something, if it happens between January and June, you could actually hire that contractor from the previous...
It's not fiscal year or budget year?
Budget year, budget year. Budget year. I think that should be looked at, because you're not getting any city work done with the concrete projects between January and when you approve this today, if that makes any sense.
Unless we have money in last year's budget.
Say again?
Unless we have money in last year's budget. I mean, it...
But it expires December 31st.
Yeah, it's contracted.
Appreciate your comments.
Change of this contract.
Does anybody else like to comment on this item? Any more council discussion? Motion?
Wait, Kyle, does the contract end on December 31st, or do we do it in a fiscal year?
It does end on December 31st. So generally, we run them fairly early in the year. This year, we didn't have a lot of projects running around in that time, so we didn't put it out until we started seeing some projects pop up. We usually don't put concrete down in January, February, or March. So a lot of times, we'll run it concurrently with the sidewalk LID project, the sidewalk LID closure and reopening. So you usually see this contract open up around March. So this year, since we didn't renew the LID, we're just rolling with the old one. We didn't really put out the contract until we started seeing, well, we have a need for this contract. So we brought it back up.
Why don't we run it fiscal year to fiscal year?
Usually, we close it out with the LID. So once we switch the LID to, you know, where a rolling thing, we never made a change with the concrete contractor. I think specifically for a few of the topics, like one, price changing, the long hiatus on actual work being done. Generally, you know, unless the weather allows, we won't usually lay concrete November, December, January, February, March. So I mean, for five months, it's a possibility, but not. So really, it's controlled by when we put the contract out for bid and bring it for award. So if we wanted to have it in full force for the full year, we would just change the dates that we would let the contract and get it awarded by you guys.
If there is no more discussion, entertain a motion.
I move that we award the contract for the 2025 concrete repair projects to G. Gordon Construction Company, LLC, for the unit prices as shown in the bid summary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? A vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Considering approving Arts Commission recommendations of the school design for the traffic signal box wraps. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you can see from the staff report, it says here that in the fall of '24, the Art Commission reached out to all the schools in our LaGrande School District requesting designs for signal box wraps. This project goes back well before that. The Art Commission's been working on it for three or four years, has a desire to beautify downtown. Signal boxes are those ugly gray boxes at the base on the sidewalk of all the traffic signals. I provided you an example of what that looks like. We've also provided you all the designs that were approved by the Art Commission. Shout out to Greenwood and the middle school and the high school, who followed their directions perfectly with the full panel design, whereas the other schools decided to do the kind of the eight-and-a-half-by-lam collages, which is fine. But that's why they look different. This is part of an approval process that also has to go to ODOT. Based on our public art policy, comes to you first, and then on to ODOT for final approval, and then installation. It is in this year's fiscal year budget. Are there any questions?
Arts Commission approved all this.
They did.
These are great. They're cute.
Yeah. Really nice. Ricky, Joannicki has comments?
No, I'm just so very excited that it's happening. So I guess that's a comment.
Ricky was on the Art Commission for four or five years, so that's why I thought she'd have something to say, so.
I'd like to.
Perfect. If there is no more questions, we will move into, thank you, Stu. Is there any citizens that would like to comment on this item? Counselor discussion? Motion?
I move that the proposed designs be approved forward to ODOT for their final approval, and authorize the city manager to sign the necessary documents as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? No. All right. Union County Commissioner update. Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. I want to keep this quick, so we're not here till 8:30. Right, Mike?
Right.
You said we're going to be here till 8:30, so. Got a couple of dates for you. June 11th, we'll be having our mandated Greater Idaho meeting at 9:00 AM, if you'd like to attend. It's always pretty interesting. And then June 25th, we will be doing the county adoption, too, at 9:00 AM, if you'd like to join us and watch us adopt the county budget. On the legislative side, Signe Dieh, he's here in a couple of weeks, so hopefully next month, when I come approach you, I will have good news. I had one senator, last time I was in Salem, say, "I'm about to write this guy a personal check."
That doesn't surprise me.
And kicked me out of his office. He didn't want me in there anymore. I don't know if you saw, my son did write a letter, and I took it with me, and it got to Senator President, the Senate President Wagner's desk, and he sent me a picture with it in his hand.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. If you go to my Facebook page, my son, he was 10 at the time when he wrote it, and he did a fantastic job, all by himself, had no idea that he was doing it. And he gave it to me and was walking out the door to go to Salem. So it was really, really great, proud daddy moment for us. But for everything else, we're wrapping up budgets. I don't even know how many budgets I've done this year. But so just that, and finishing up the legislative year, a few, last few weeks left before Signe Dieh, so a lot of fireworks are happening, a lot of trading, a lot of deals, a lot of stuff I don't appreciate, but that's the way it works over there. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Fingers crossed. I'm sure you'll know before the next meeting if it happens or not.
Thank you.
I sure hope so.
Staff comments. Do we have any staff that would like to speak this evening?
If you didn't notice, it's paving season. And if you didn't notice it's paving season, you haven't been to the north side of town yet. So we've already gotten three streets completed. We got Benton, we've got North Ash, we've got Division, and we're going to be moving, we're not really to the south side, but kind of. So if you didn't know, there's a big baseball tournament coming to LaGrande next month. And so in preparation, we were going to try and pave a few streets that all of those attendees are coming to. So next week, you'll see oak from Adams up to Palmer. And then the following week, we're going to be doing cedar from Adams up to Palmer, so people can get to them from the field on fresh, new pavement. So pretty excited about that. So just want to make sure you knew there were paving works going on, because I know I've been asked a few times, are you guys going to start working? And just wanted to let you guys know, we are working. Still, if you see the water crew or sewer crew out on the street, it's in...
Still, if you see the water crew or sewer crew out on the street, it's in preparation for paving because that's all they're doing right now. So that's where our focus is and that's where we'll keep going. Thanks.
Keep getting a lot of questions about twelve. Is that still on the docket for this summer sometime?
Yeah. Last time I talked to the contractor, they had aimed for the middle of this month. I haven't heard from him yet, but you know, paving contractors are notorious for showing up on your doorstep and saying, "Hey, we're here." So I'm going to reach out again this week and say, "Hey, are we still in the middle of the month or not?" So but yeah, I would anticipate by the next month, Twelfth Street, Walnut, Alder, Inn are all going to be completed.
Since Kyle gave me the perfect segue, the Little League tournament's in about three weeks. So June twenty third through the thirtieth, literally three or more thousand people will be in town, lots and lots of teams. It's the district state tournament, so happy to host that. It's a lot of work, as you can imagine. And we're also doing a little thing called the Riverside Playground Replacement. So if you haven't been by there, please drive by, check that out. There's a twenty-five foot tower that's installed, concreted in. We're on to surfacing now. Huge thanks to the Fire Department and Public Works Department for helping out with that and all the volunteers. Lots of people came out, lots of people gave money and time and effort for that project. And my most recent ask is to carpet, I want to come out and play the carpet, which will go under the playground structure, which is coming up soon. Public Works has been invaluable to the project and my crew has been unbelievable. So lots of people spent a lot of time, huge community support. That's what's special about La Grande, it's pretty special stuff. So opening soon, maybe right before that Little League tournament. Thank you.
Thank you, Stu.
Mr. Mayor and Councilors, since Commissioner Carthaus said we had till eight thirty, I thought I'd share some stuff. No, I've got some information I'd like to share with you related to a few things that have been stated tonight during other conversation. I think it's important to identify that, yeah, we have some social issues that you guys all know about. And nationwide, we have social issues that we're experiencing. Some of the things that we see and feel, you know, in La Grande are the same thing that, you know, everyone around our nation is feeling. And that's a long conversation and hotly debated, but I just want to give you some factual information. We have seen a significant uptick in La Grande related to individuals and calls for service related to mental health. Starting about two thousand seven, we've done a really comprehensive analysis of what we have actually experienced. We've got all that data to show what we have experienced and where we've been and where we are now. Organ drug policy, that hasn't helped some of the livability things that our community has seen and felt. The homeless issue, those are all intertwined and connected. You know, I've spoke to you before about the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision in Martin v. City of Boise. That really upended what we could do and couldn't do related to, you know, people camping on public property. You guys remember the, you know, what we went through with Mac Square? And we all saw that. I saw it every day. Lieutenant Hayes is here. We both worked on that super hard, you know, with support from other city staff and you all. We, once we knew where we were, we passed a new city code that has been extremely effective for us as a tool. And so what I want to share with you is what's actually going, what's the truth, what's the facts today related to, you know, what at least your police department is experiencing in calls for service related to homelessness, mental health, and some of those associated things? So let me start with mental health. Yes, we're still experiencing more calls for service than we were, you know, a decade and a half ago. But this year so far, we have received a hundred and ninety-four calls for service related to mental health that has a direct connection to mental health issues. So January one to the first of June, that's that number. And again, a hundred and ninety-four. The same exact time period last year in calendar year twenty twenty-four, two hundred and eighty-five calls for service, same thing. So that's a thirty-two percent decrease this year. I want to, I should have prefaced what I just told you, it's too early to say, hey, this is on a trend to, you know, we're not going to have any call. No, I'm just sharing with you factually what we're experiencing right now today. So we're still having lots of those calls for service, but this is the, we're just now seeing where we have not seen any first half of a calendar year where we've experienced this decline. Homelessness or transient-related calls for service is the way we categorize those when they come into our dispatch center. Last year, the same time period, so January one to June first, we ninety-five calls for service directly related to homelessness. This calendar year, that same time period, twenty-nine. So a sixty-nine percent decrease. That too, if you look at five years, I mean, we were calendar year twenty twenty-three, two hundred and thirty-eight calls for service. But that was during that period of time where all over the state of Oregon, we were wrestling with the Boise decision out of the Ninth Circuit and also a Grants Pass case that was in front of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. But we got some good tools and we passed a city code that has been effective. And I'm not suggesting that the issue is gone, but I just want to share with you that we're having some positive impact. One of the things that directly related to homelessness that we saw an uptick correlated the same was trespass calls for service. A lot of our local businesses deal with that because they have people that are there camping on their properties or being there and they don't want them there. So we get a lot, we've got a lot of calls for service related to trespass that were directly correlated to those same types of calls. And again, last year, same time period, three hundred and twenty-eight calls for service related to trespass. Now, not every single one of those was related to homelessness, I understand. But this year, we're at two forty-seven. So we're at a twenty-five percent decrease, we're seeing that this year. So some of these are positive things. I want to take the, I'm an optimist, so I want to take the positive where we can get it. I also just wanted to share with you that, you know, the actual facts of where we're actually at today. Aside from that, I'll come back and if you guys got questions about it, happy to answer those. But some positive things, we just had two new dispatchers graduate from the telecommunications academy, if you saw that on our social media. Wonderful people, they're doing a great job. They're doing some in-house training now, but super excited. We're testing and so we do have two vacancies in the nine-one-one center for dispatchers. So if you were to turn back the clock to our authorized staffing level before we added those two positions in this fiscal year, we would be at full staffing. But we haven't realized that those additional staff members, and what I can tell you is that they're as needed today as they were when we, you know, discussed that, you know, so thoroughly. But we're testing for dispatch on the tenth of June again. And so if you know anybody that you think would like to be a nine-one-one dispatcher, it's not too late for them to get their application in. We'd love to see them. Police officers, we have one police officer, one of those seventeen that I told you that we're staffed at right now. One of those seventeen is actually at the police academy right now, scheduled to graduate from the basic police academy in August. He's doing a great job, wonderful young man. I hope to be able to introduce him to you when he comes back. But that's all I had to share, but if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So just to be clear, the two dispatchers that recently graduated, that still leaves us too short?
That's right. Yeah, those are part of the, so yes, so adding the two nine-one-one dispatchers gives us, and that's in the budget. It was in the budget this fiscal year that, you know, we'll close out the end of June. They're in the budget for the coming fiscal year. That authorizes us twelve nine-one-one dispatchers. But right now, we're staffed at ten. But the ten, that's why I was, if, I apologize if it seemed confusing, the ten that we're at right now was the staffing level that we operated with in the nine-one-one center for, you know, what we talked about twenty years since, you know, early two thousands.
And we remain looking for two full-time officers. And are worried about losing some of the ones that we have, you said, because of applications.
You're starting to get into some of what keeps you awake at night. Yeah, I worry about it all the time and we're doing the best we can. But of course, we're testing again for police officer. Later this month, I can't remember the date, I think, I want to think maybe the seventeenth, but either way, we have a test day scheduled and we've invited some candidates to come test. We're just not seeing the number of applicants that we, I mean, twenty-five years ago, for one position, we would receive a hundred applications. And, you know, we're lucky if we can, you know, receive twenty now and quite frankly, half of those just aren't qualified, you know, with the job description. So but, you know, in my discussions with people in the community, I mean, that's representative. I mean, we're all struggling with those things. But we're constantly, Lieutenant Hayes and I meet regularly and our leadership team at the police department and we are, as a matter of fact, Lieutenant Hayes is working on what we're going to call a recruitment team. We have two officers that are super interested in doing it. We all have to do this all within resource limitations because we don't have the extra time to just send people to do these things. But we're trying new things that we haven't had to do in the past. And of course, I communicate with chiefs from all over the state and they're all doing the same thing. And what I can tell you, even the largest agencies are, they're experiencing something really similar, it's just a different, you know, different numbers.
So as I recall in the April meeting, you and Sheriff Bowen kind of explained to the council that, you know, as it pertains to, you know, drug-specific investigations, that some of those are more time-intensive and more better suited, I guess, to a dedicated officer rather than a regular patrol person, you know, who's dealing with those things, but kind of as they come along maybe more. Steve's comments, I think, intrigued me a little bit. I mean, I think, as I've expressed, I think you all know, we, I think I can speak for all of us when I say we all support, you know, our law enforcement officers and would like as much as we are able and as much as it makes fiduciary sense, you know, without destroying the budget and without destroying other services unless citizens come and tell us that they don't want something else and they'd rather have this. You know, I mean, I think we're trying to balance that, but we certainly support those efforts and see the need and see, also see the efforts of the officers that are there. So, you know, for what it's worth, you know, thanks. And I think I for one would like to continue that discussion and that exploration of, you know, how do we manage that? If we haven't, if we're not doing it right, how do we do it better? What are the options we have available that maybe we haven't explored?
Right. I appreciate that, counselor. I mean, I would certainly advocate for in the coming year sometime, if the council so chooses to have a work session where, you know, I could share information, field questions and maybe bring a lot of clarity to, you know, staffing and our organization. Steve mentioned something about, you know, one of the vacancies, could we, I appreciate that, but I think it's just a matter of, I could explain, you know, what we can do and what really just doesn't work. And I think it's important for you guys to know that, you know, what we do organizationally within the police department, no different than any of the other city departments, but with the staffing that we have, when we have vacancies, I mean, in a perfect world, we would be fully staffed, right? And even then, we may not be able to do all the things that we would like to do or as much of the things that we are doing or would like to do. But when we have vacancies, I have no choice but to staff patrol first. Those are the, those are the uniformed officers that when the nine-one-one call comes in, a call for service comes in, that's the first responders. So I cannot run those shifts short anymore, even now. I mean, we're running them short because we don't have enough people, right? We don't, we have enough vacancies that I just can't have those shifts fully staffed. But in as much as we can, that always has to be the priority. So.
That is the expectation too.
That, right.
When someone calls nine-one-one and asks for your help, that we have a police officer there and, I mean, that's what citizens tell me.
And I appreciate that.
That's what we need to prioritize.
And it's not a stretch of the imagination to know that when we operate our patrol shifts short, there's no fewer calls for service, we have fewer officers to handle those calls for service, that additional workload creates pressure on those individual officers, which sometimes can make it more attractive to them to go to work somewhere where they don't have as many calls for service. So that is counterproductive. So we really want to adequately staff those patrol shifts as much as we can. So, you know, going back to what you said earlier, Counselor Glebe, you know, of the arrests that we have made related to drug law violations, those are reactive arrests, which means that our police officers are out in the field contacting people, in some cases responding to calls for service. By having a person or an individual or the staff enough to dedicate someone to do drug investigations, the difference is that's proactive investigations, which means they can go seek things out. There's just not that much time for our patrol, our police officers to do that when they're otherwise, I mean, you've seen the data, the calls for service are up, they just don't have the time to diversify and do those proactive things as much as we'd like. But we do what we can with what we have.
I for one would support a work session and, you know, for what it's worth, Sheriff Bowen, you know, my hat's off to you two. It's easy for us to sit up here and talk. You guys go out and put your lives on the line and you face situations that most of us would never want to see. And so, you know, beyond all the dialogue and everything else, I think, you know, my deepest respect for the both of you, for the people that you serve with you, that is a position of sacrifice that you all make on a daily basis. And we owe you at least that acknowledgement and that respect. We want to help you. We want to continue to have those dialogues at a high level, you know, at a level where we can, you know, have mutual respect and civility and I just, I want to be clear about that. You know, for what it's worth, you know, it was a bit of a wake-up call, I think, for everybody to say, we, you know, it is part of our attention, but maybe it needs to garner more of it, maybe it is worthy of a work session on it and just say, look, I mean, the budget is what it is, it's going to have to come from somewhere, but maybe it's time to begin that discussion a little more deeply.
Thank you. And I appreciate the notes of appreciation. I mean, the truth is, counselor, I mean, I cannot speak for all of my staff members, but I mean, it's my honor to serve and, you know, serving this community. I'm a member of the community before I was a police officer and I intend to be a member of this community when I am no longer serving in this capacity. So it's my honor to serve and I feel like that that's the mindset that most of my staff have. But that's meaningful because you guys pay attention in this era post George Floyd and the defund police era, you know what, we still felt like we had incredible support from our community, incredible support from our elected officials like yourself. But make no mistake, your police officers feel that, you know, when they constantly, and here's the truth, that impacts our young people and those that are aspiring to enter career fields and it, you know, a job in public service and particularly being a police officer may not be that attractive because all they hear is hate towards our law enforcement. So when you express appreciation, it's meaningful and I will certainly pass it on to my staff. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I just want to give you a quick staffing update. We had a couple of firefighters that resigned early May. Excuse me, we put out a posting, closed on Friday. We had seventeen applications. Looks like we're probably going to invite somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to twelve to test the eleventh of June and then we'll hope to hire them the end of July. We have one of our firefighters that was in paramedic school has recently completed that and is in field training currently and we have five other paramedic students all around the station, so we're heading in the right direction.
Thanks, Chief. Any other staff? City manager comments?
Thank you. Next Wednesday at five thirty.
Next Wednesday at 5:30 till 7:00 in this room is the public meet and greet for the city manager finalists. We have four identified, and then the council and two interview panels on Thursday will be interviewing those finalists. So invite everybody to show up and have a chat. There'll be comment cards so that you can provide some feedback that the council will get. So this room, next Wednesday, 5:30 to 7:00. I think the introduction of the candidates happens at 6:00, so if you can't make it right at 5:30, that's fine, the real festivities happen until 6:00, but come in and meet the four. I think we've got some really good candidates for the city council. Go ahead.
All right. Counselor discussions. Is there any Counselor like to?
I don't want to justify my no for the budget vote, but I do want to say that I'm disappointed that we did not entertain ADA accessibility funding for Art Center East. I have fibromyalgia, and getting up and downstairs every day for my job, carrying 50-gallon totes becomes exhausting, and we already had somebody else in here tonight saying that we need more ADA accessibility in the city's event. So moving forward, I would just like the council to consider ADA accessibility all around a little more earnestly. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
I'll speak up a little bit, yes. It always hurts me a little bit because I have two people who I deeply respect in this room. Sheriff, you're one of them, by the way. I think you do a fine job, for the record, and most of us could never do what you do. I also have gotten to know Robert well over the last four and a half years that I've served on this council, and I just want to say that the one word I would use to describe Robert is integrity, and that came from Steve as well. And I've just, and I admire that. I'm under no illusions that I always agree with everything that everybody does, but in all of the interactions that I've had with our city manager, he's been forthcoming, he's been responsive, he's been honest, he's been fair, and integrity is something I know that he values, and so, you know, I appreciate this. I think sometimes there's miscommunication, we all get busy, I don't know. I just, I know that, for the record, I admire both of you, and I genuinely appreciate the jobs that both of you do, which are difficult. Robert, I remember once when I joined the council, I think you explained to me that every decision that we make creates winners and losers. And, you know, to some extent, sometimes it's half of the community wins and the other half loses, and I think I remember you saying something to the effect of, you know, by the time you've made a handful of decisions, you know, midway through the morning, you've ticked off the entire city at least once. And that's the reality of people who are in these positions. I've come to appreciate that more the longer that I've been a part of this council. This is difficult. None of us are paid, you know? If we are, it's at a rate less than minimum wage, but, you know, for the hours that are put in, but I just, you know, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the job that the people do who run this city, because it's challenging, it's day in, it's day out, and by and large, I think we all can stand tall and stand proud of the people who represent this city and who run it. We have a community that's a blessing to live in, largely because of the way that the city is managed and run. It's not perfect. No one's under any illusions that it is. We're all working to make it better, and I for one hope that, again, we can continue to have these dialogues at a high level. There's times where we need to challenge each other. We should be challenging each other's positions on things, but in a way that, you know, we can acknowledge a civil dialogue and a tone that is respectful of what people put in, so.
Well said, Dave. Any more, Counselor? Glad I'm going to adjourn it.